So, good morning everybody. I want to welcome you to the August 9, 2022 meeting of the Calhoun County Board of Commissioners. So today we're operating a little different. We have a funeral to attend this morning at 11 o'clock, so we're trying to get done. So we are going to open this meeting, but we're going to go into executive session because we have two small items to take care of, and then we'll be back out here to continue with the meeting. So as I said, it's a little different than our normal procedures. Commissioner Williams, do you have a motion for me?
I do. Make a motion to recess to executive session pursuant to 3-05b7 to consult with council to obtain legal advice.
Second. I have to approve the agenda. Excuse me.
No. Move to approve the agenda and to recess to executive session pursuant to 305b7 to consult with council to obtain legal advice.
Second. Have a motion on the second that we approve the agenda as presented and we go into executive session. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Ours. Motion carries. So we're going to go into exec session. We'll be back shortly. Thank you.
So, good morning, everybody. We're gonna reconvene the August ninth, 2022 meeting of the Calver County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I'd like to ask Pastor James Kent, if he would come forward and give us an indication. Good morning, Pastor Kent.
Good morning.
Good morning. Full house this morning.
Full house today.
Let us, uh, let us come in to the Lord in prayer. Dear Father in heaven, we thank you for this beautiful day that you have given us. We thank you for the, uh, the rest of this summer, uh, that you have given us all. We ask you to, uh, be with this council as they meet this eve, this morning, as they, uh, grant them wisdom, grant them, uh, the ability to see your gifts at work and to use those gifts in accord with your good, holy, and perfect will. We ask your blessing on them in all their decisions that they would be making today and to the future. Lord, we ask all this in the name of your son, Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with ever-giving justice for all.
So, thank you Pastor Kent. Pastor Kent comes to us today from the First Lutheran Church of Huntingtown. We appreciate you coming in. Uh...
Thank you.
Only have, uh, one public service announcement today. Uh, we've switched up our process today because, uh, funeral services are gonna be held for Malcolm Fun. Uh, Mr. Fun was very active in the community, gave a lot to this county, so, uh, we're gonna try to get out of here in time today to make his service. So, uh, we've abbreviated things, and with this full house, it's gonna be a challenge, but we're glad to have all of you with us today. So, first item on the agenda, Commissioner Gad... Commissioner Hart, you have Northern High School Girls Track Team.
Good morning.
Good morning.
If I could have the members come up one by one and introduce yourself on the mic and what grade you're in, and come on up, please. Coaches as well. Don't be shy.
I'm Julia Devine. I'm going to University of Maryland.
I'm Gentry Bowie, and I'm a rising sophomore.
I'm Casey Hoyle, and I'm going to the University of Maryland.
I'm Leah Powell, and I'm running track at Delver State University.
I'm Destiny Lewis, and I'm running at Bowie State University.
I'm Tony Lillard, and I'm going into junior year.
I'm Mia Halbert, and I'm a rising junior.
I'm Ella Messia, and I'm a rising sophomore.
I'm Destiny Ryan, I'm going to junior year.
I'm Alexi Rashudo, I'm going to Liberty University.
I'm Annie Campbell, I'm going to my senior year.
John Erdahl, Assistant Track Coach.
Josh Dawson, Head Coach.
Commissioner Williams can attest to this. You know, I used to have a set of wheels back in my younger days, you know, and I had different shoes that might give one of you guys a run there, but I forgot the tennis shoes, you know, so. How are you guys this morning? Good, good, good. I say it all the time, you know, for such a small county, it's amazing how well we do in sports academics. It, it's truly tremendous. It really is, and none of it comes easy. You know, they don't give you any breaks 'cause we're from a small town. You gotta go get it and take it. So, we're very proud of you guys and very excited to have you here this morning. I'll read this here for you. It says, "Whereas the youth of Calver County represents our most treasured resource, the accomplishments, achievements, and abilities of these young citizens deserve the recognition and praise of their elders. Whereas the two thousand twenty-two Northern High School Girls Track and Field Team won the 3A Maryland Public Secondary School Athletic Association, MPSSAA, Indoor Track Championship, making them the 2022 3A Indoor East Region Champions and securing their third, their third state champion title. Whereas the team was led by Head Coach Josh Dawson and Assistant Coach John Erdahl, Clayton Lewis, Hayden Trantner, Darrell Quick, and Samantha Cole. And whereas the members of the 2022 Northern Girls Track and Field Team were Annabelle Argulis, Noel Blackman, Gentry Bowie, Annie Campbell, Grace Caraway, Julia Devine, Mia Halbert, Gail Henderson, Casey Hoyle, Destiny Lewis, Tony Lillard, Ella Messia, Katie Nealan, Leah Powell, Alexa Rashudo, Destiny Ryan, and Sydney... Anyways, thank you. Normally Commissioner Williams handles all the law. Anything gets over two letters, he takes over, but, uh... So, I apologize if I mispronounce anybody's name. Uh, "Whereas the Board of County Commissioners wishes to pay tribute to and dedication in many long hours of practice, fine performance and accomplishments of the Northern Patriots Girls Track and Field Team. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County that sincere congratulations and best wishes for continued success are hereby extended to the Northern Patriots Girls Track and Field Team on winning the 2021-2022 3A Indoor East Region Championship. Be it further proclaimed that appreciation and thanks are given under this hands and seal this ninth day of August 22, signed by all five county commissioners."
Yeah, let's try to scooch in as much as we can.
I know it looks like those candy ones you get, but you can't eat them. Who's sticking like candy?
You need help, Bishop.
Ah, yeah. You can tell it's first thing in the morning, but I need help all the time. All right.
Can't we just get the full line to ship maybe one person over? There we go. More coaches scooching over here. Perfect. Okay. Here we go. One, two, three. One, two. Do any parents wanna come up here to take a photo?
Congratulations, ladies.
Congratulations.
Thank you. So, next we have the Northern High School Boys Track Team. Commissioner Williams?
Yes, yes, please, Josh. Thank you, sir.
My name is Daniel Cooley. I'm going to Lincoln University.
Nathan Jacobs, I'm going to Alderson-Broddish University.
Tyler Basket, playing football at Brown University.
Kason Bradford, running at Roberts Wesleyan College.
Gavin Stevens, I'm a rising senior.
Cameron King, I'm going to the University of North Carolina Wilmington.
Roger Ricky Lewis, I'm going to Northern High School in the fall.
Awesome deal. I'm a rising sophomore.
Justin Dell, going to run for Frostburg St.
Jordan Tuck, rising junior.
Nathan Chaney, rising junior.
Connor Yakamini, rising junior.
John Erdahl, Assistant Coach.
Josh Dawson, Head Coach.
"Whereas the youth of Calver County represent our most treasured resource, the accomplishments, achievements, and abilities of these young citizens deserve the recognition and praise of their elders. And whereas the 2022 Northern High School Boys Track and Field Team won the 3A Maryland Public Secondary Schools Athletic Association's Outdoor Track Championship." Can I get applause from the audience? "Making them the 2022 3A Outdoor South Region Champions. And whereas the Northern High School Boys Track and Field Team were the 2022 Southern Maryland Athletic Conference SMAC Champions. And whereas the team was led by Head Coach Josh Dawson and Assistant Coaches John Erdahl, Clayton Lewis, Hayden Trantner, Darrell Quick, Samantha Cole, and Kimmy May. And whereas members of the 2022 Northern Boys Track and Field Team were, and I apologize if I mispronounce in advance, Tyler Basket, Kason Bradford, Josh Carter, Nathan Chaney, Daniel Cooley, Deshaun Creek, Justin Dow, Austin Dow, Camden Globbets, Josh Haynes, Nathan Jacobs, Bradley Jenkins, Tayshaun Jones, Cameron King, Rigorica Lewis, I knew that, please, I knew there would be a little giggle there. I apologize, sir. Owen Pierceow, Gavin Stevens, Bobby Taber, Gavin Thigpen, Jordan Tuck, and Connor Yakomane. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners wishes to pay tribute to the dedication, many long hours of practice, fine performance, and accomplishments of the Northern Patriots Boys Track and Field Team. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County that sincere congratulations and best wishes for continued success are hereby extended to the Northern Patriots Boys Track and Field Team on winning the 2021 through 2022 3A Outdoor East Region Championship." Can the gallery give another one? "Be it further proclaimed that appreciation and thanks are extended to their coaches for their guidance and encouragement to the entire team, given under our hands and seal this ninth day of August 2022." Gentlemen, congratulations.
Center that, please, sir.
Turn sideways like the ladies. Yeah, if you can kinda get everybody in, if you turn a little sideways. Yeah? All faces in center if you're turning sideways. Yeah, kinda angle in there, you're good. Uh, can you find the pocket? Find your, uh, the camera lens. If you can see the lens, it can see you.
Kevin, you want me more over there?
Uh, just find a pocket in between, uh, yeah.
Find a pocket. There we go.
There we go. One, two, three. Here we go. One, two, three. Awesome. Congrats, guys.
Congratulations, gentlemen. Congratulations, Coach. You know you come here a lot when you know the process. So as Commissioner Hart mentioned, you know, we have a lot of championship teams in Calver County. We're very proud of all of you and your accomplishments. And we still need to get the Calvert Girls Softball Team in here because they were state champions last year. So we need to get working on that. So again, we thank you for taking time out of your busy days to come in and be recognized. And I hear a lot of the boys going to college. So Coach is going to have his hands full next year putting together a state championship team. Yeah, so congratulations. So the next proclamation we have on the agenda today, Commissioner Gadway is for the 2022 Teacher of the Year.
I was thinking they were going to be making more noise on their way out. So I was kind of trying to slow down, but they're being quiet. So this year's Teacher of the Year is Rachel Olmer. Would you like to step up to the microphone? Oh, now they're getting loud.
They can't contain it for so long.
They deserve to be, make a little bit of noise. They got that. But carrying on the theme of success in schools, the, as we see the students with their physical sports and everything and their successes, Rachel Olmer is this year's Calver County Public School Teacher of the Year. Go ahead.
Yeah, say something.
Absolutely.
I was promised I did not have to, but that's okay. I teach at Huntington High School. I've been a part of the school system. It's going to be my fifth year coming up, my 11th year overall. I'm so happy to be teaching in this county and these awesome kids. I teach English, so it's really important, I think. I teach it because communication skills are something you're going to need everywhere, no matter what you do in life. So I'm really, really grateful and blessed to be able to teach those vital lifelong skills in this county. So thank you for recognizing me, and I just hope to make you proud next steps.
Fantastic. Did you bring anybody with you today?
I did. This is my husband Brandon back here, and then my three girls, Rosalyn, Grace, and Maggie, also part of the Calvert system, so.
Great.
Fabulous. Congratulations. Would you like to come?
Yeah.
And do you want your girls up with you or?
Yeah, sure.
Anybody that wants to come.
Why not?
Maybe they're future teachers. That's right.
All right.
Come on, come on up. Come on.
We have people to do the filming. We know.
Yeah.
He's sitting over there. All right. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County desires to recognize educators who are dedicated to improving the quality of learning for Calver County students. And whereas on March 10, 2022, Rachel Olmer of Huntington High School was selected as recipient of the Maryland Teacher of the Year for Calver County Public Schools. And whereas Rachel has taught in the Calver County Public School System for five years and has served as a role model for students and teachers alike. Whereas alongside being a teacher for English Language Arts at Huntington High School, Rachel has gone above and beyond to educate by establishing a student-led writing center which encourages peer relationships and fosters the importance of reading and writing. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County, this insidious congratulations are extended to Rachel Olmer for being Calver County Public Schools Teacher of the Year. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners congratulates Rachel for her achievement in education and leadership and expresses appreciation for her dedicated service to Calver County Public Schools, given under our hands and seal this ninth day of August 2022, signed by the Commissioners. Congratulations.
And I made it through. I know it's. I actually, I was afraid. We'll get a photo with you all, and then Marty Super's going to jump in as well.
Thank you.
Short guy's in the front. Can you be available?
All right. Here we go. One in. And one, two, three. Here we go. One, two, three. Awesome. Congratulations.
Yeah, just wait till they're teenagers.
Pleasure to be here.
So following with the theme of education, next on the agenda is Educational Support Professional of the Year. Commissioner Williams?
Please come forward. And.
You can adjust it.
Yes. Now, Mrs. Smith, I'm not as intimidating as Commissioner Hart. No, if you wish to say a few words, and please. Or if not, I can, you can just read the proclamation. That is, yes.
Well, usually I'm a lot better with one-on-one communication, being a nurse.
We just talked to Steve.
It's just you and I.
But yes.
Pretend Commissioner Williams is in his normal, like detention after school when you have to explain why he's there.
But I am very thankful for this honor. I've been a school nurse now with Plum Point Middle School for three years. It was a big change. In the county, I worked at the hospital for a couple of years, and then I was also a hospice nurse for the county, and then got into school nursing, and I really love it. And I'm thankful to be here.
That's wonderful. Thank you for coming. And if you would, please come forward. Do you have anyone here with you?
Yes.
You'd like to introduce?
My oldest daughter, Lila Smith. She was a junior at Northern. Hi.
All right, Miss Lila. And please come up.
Not to put you on the spot or anything.
No, no. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County desires to recognize educational support professionals who are dedicated to improving the quality of life and wellness for Calver County students and staff. And whereas on March 10, 2022, Dana Smith of Plum Point Middle School was selected as the recipient of the Maryland Educational Support Professional of the Year Award for Calver County Public Schools. And whereas Dana has worked in the Calver County Public School System for four years as a school nurse and makes it her mission to help students improve their health and well-being every day. And whereas alongside being a school nurse at Plum Point Middle School, Dana also serves as the school's Wellness Coordinator and Mental Health Awareness Committee Coordinator, encouraging both physical and mental wellness for students and staff. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County that sincere congratulations are extended to Dana Smith for being awarded Calver County Public Schools Educational Support Professional of the Year. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners congratulates Dana for her achievements in school wellness and leadership and expresses appreciation for her dedicated service to Calver County Public Schools, given under our hands and seal this ninth day of August 2022. Congratulations, Dana.
Have a great day. So the next proclamation on the agenda today is Mr. Randy Smith, Commissioner Gadway.
Mr. Smith. Don't even bother stopping at that one. Just go ahead and come right on. You might want to say something. I'm going to give him this one. But I want to point something out. I, you know, I don't know if the gallery was visible on camera earlier, but we had a lot of people in here this morning. I mean, there had to be 80, 90, 95 people in here today. We had to get rid of them before we brought anybody from the fire department up, because there's a sign over here that says maximum occupancy 90. So thank you for keeping track of us, Mr. Smith. Please introduce yourself, and if you want, tell us everything about yourself.
I'll be here tomorrow.
You'll be here tomorrow, not me.
Good morning. I'm Randy Smith, a lifetime member, charter member of Dunkirk Volunteer Fire Department. I currently am the servant executive committee from the Maryland State Fire Association, which I have, able by the director, executive secretary here, Tom Manali, and my family to join me. But I'm proud to be here today, humble. Been a long time coming. Joined the fire service. Started hanging around the fire department in 1975. Fire Department has been a family, way from my family because being adopted child born in, he's born in DC, raised in Calver County. Took abilities to make me, get me to where I am right now. Was a building, part of the name, part of the building, as I grew older, I had to figure out what I needed to do with myself. So my brothers went off to the military, so I decided to stay back and now I get into the volunteer fire service. And the fire service, I tell you, really grounded me, taught me a lot, maybe helped me to the person I am today. I don't know where I would be if I hadn't been for the volunteer fire service. And assisted to be successful as a volunteer fighter. Past president, past chief, assistant chief of the county government, supporting, giving you the tools, financial needs to be successful and to turn out a good product for the citizens of Calver County. Appreciate it. Appreciate everybody that came. Appreciate all my family, friends, professionals, volunteers that came to support me today.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to say a few words about Randy?
No, you don't want to guess?
There's got to be one to start.
I'm Randy Smith, and Randy's twin brother. I'm very proud of him. Like you said, we come from an orphanage background. And yes, I went off to the military. That's where I got a lot of my foundation. And to see him to where he is today, from where he came from, where we came from, is an accomplishment itself. So I'm so proud of him. Thanks.
Just wanted to take a minute and congratulate Randy. Randy was inducted into the Hall of Fame this year for the Maryland State Firemen's Association. I've been the executive director there for four years, and I was so excited to see Randy come on the executive committee this year. So we look forward to working with you, Randy, and congratulations. Well deserved.
Hi, I'm his cousin Louise, and I remember him when. So whatever he's saying, we graduated from Northern High School in 1976, so he truly had the heart and desire to be a fireman. And I'm so, so, so proud of him. Congratulations.
So my name's Eric Oldsberger. I'm a past chief of Dunkirk Volunteer Fire Department, currently assistant chief of Prince Rutter. I've had the pleasure of knowing Randy and calling him a friend for most of my life. He's been, growing up, I would go visit him at work in evening time, because he was the only guy at Fleet Services allowed to touch my dad's cruiser. So Randy is a long time coming. I'm proud to call you my friend, a mentor, and part of my family. And for my brothers and sisters and my parents, thank you. I love you very much.
Eric's actually one of my son.
I see.
Same haircut.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I am Alberta Gray, known as Bootsy. And I'm very proud to have Randy, my adopted son, my friend, my co-pal, and whatever, to recognize him, to be the person that he truly is. He has a very kind heart, very helpful, and is willing. And he's been in the fire department since he was 14, 15 years old.
Ten, ready.
I'm right. So thanks so much. God bless.
Morning. My name's Cliff Mack. I have my best friend standing before me, and I can say he has been a friend from the beginning of our friendship, going back to Guinness and Chevrolet. He was at Guinness and Chevrolet, and I was at Annapolis Auto Parts. We not only dragged race together, we danced together. I was the best man at Renee and Randy's, one of the best men. Randy, because I don't want to forget this, at their wedding. I don't know how many friends you have that you can say have integrity, their morals are rooted in Christ, and they're ethical. Okay, so morals, ethics, and integrity, this guy exudes it. And I'm not trying to set him up for failure, but this guy has demonstrated those characteristics over many decades with this one. And I've seen him, how he treats other people. Okay, some of us want friends that treat us good that don't treat other people good. This man has demonstrated through his behavior on the fire department, when he was working with fleet management. Everywhere he's been, he's demonstrated, not just said what he was going to do, but he did it. God bless you, Randy. I want success for you. I want success for Calver County. I want success for the state of Maryland. He's been doing things that a lot of other people wouldn't do, under circumstances that most people would run away from. God bless you, Randy.
Randy Smith, we are so very proud of you. On behalf of the C. and L. Heritage Family, which is in honor of my grandparents, Laura and Clement Smith, who raised you as a little kid, I am just so proud of you. And on behalf of them, which is about 300 and some members strong, we've been meeting since 1994 every second Sunday at one of somebody's houses, eating their food and enjoying each other. But Randy, I am exceptionally proud of you as a brother, a friend, and as the gentleman said, whose ethics and morals are just so, so human to us, that you can bless a nation, but you bless this community. And I pray that God continues, continues to undergird you and bless you and give you strength to do what he asks you to fulfill in Calver County. God bless you.
Wow. Randy, you, to say you've left an impression on the community is an understatement. Randy, you, to say you've left an impression on the community is an understatement. When I started with the fire department, I was told by one of the senior people that this building was here long before you got here and this building will be here long after you leave. Randy, with somebody like you, that actually is not entirely true. You were there before the building and at the rate you're going, you're gonna outlive the building. So, you know, and, you know, there are so many kind words said out here that I want to sum up my personal experience with you and my personal friendship with you. There's been two or three occasions where I'll get home from work late or something like that and I'll be sitting down, just starting to relax after a really rough day, and just totally out of the blue, I'll get a text message. And I looked down and it's from Randy and it says, "Thinking of you, brother, hope you're having a great day. Tomorrow will be even better." Those text messages randomly come in, we think, but they're not. They're not random, they're intentional. You know, you have a special gift in the community and we thank you for it. So, whereas the Calver County Board of County Commissioners desires to recognize citizens who go above and beyond to strengthen local institutions and help citizens of Calver County. And whereas Randy Smith, charter member of Dunkirk Volunteer Fire Department, has been a volunteer firefighter in the state of Maryland for over forty-five years and has been countlessly recognized for his unprecedented achievements in volunteer fire service. And whereas, from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one, Randy served as president of the Southern Maryland Volunteer Fire Association. And whereas, Randy was also Dunkirk Fire Department First African-American President, having previously served as vice president and assistant chief. And whereas, on June seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, Randy was recognized by the African-American Firefighters Historical Society for his many accomplishments within the volunteer fire service in the state of Maryland. And whereas, on June twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, Randy was inducted into the Maryland State Firemen's Association Hall of Fame, a prestigious honor awarded to only ten members of the volunteer fires, rescue, or EMS service departments every year. Now, therefore be it proclaimed by the Calver County Board of County Commissioners, recognizes and congratulates Randy Smith for his induction into the Maryland State Firemen's Association Hall of Fame. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners expresses gratitude for Randy's dedication to fire service both in Calver County and the state of Maryland. And by this action, we urge all citizens to join with us in showing appreciation for the brave and heroic volunteer firefighters like Randy, who help keep our community safe. Given under our hands and seal this ninth day of August, twenty twenty-two. Thank you.
She's born his wife. Want your wife, Randy?
Yes. Come on. Come on. Down the center, Cliff, y'all, come on.
Can we have the gallery, please?
Randy?
Did you follow me, your mini picture I got? Yeah?
Can he take his mask off?
I might go up there with the question of her.
This is state social media, so smile. Thank you.
Thank you, congratulations.
Congratulations, good seeing everybody. All right, take care, all right. Good, 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 how you been? It's been warm out there. Sarah, yes, sir, how you doing, nice to meet you.
What's up, Eric? I'm wonderful, thank you.
Good word, brother. Pleasant to meet you, I'm Steve.
No, you're good. You want me in or out?
I want you in.
Oh, I was trying to hide, stay out. Your hair's on place. He must've been the last one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all again.
Thanks again, guys.
So, at this time, I have a resolution I'm gonna read. As I mentioned earlier, we're gonna try to get out of here to attend Mr. Fun's funeral. So, this is a resolution we have in his honor. Whereas Malcolm Lloyd Fun, an upstanding citizen of Calver County, led a life full of compassion and dedication to service. Malcolm's lifelong efforts to better the world around him have resor- resonated in the hearts of all who have had the honor to know him. And whereas Malcolm was raised in Calver County and attended William Sampson Brooks High School prior to school desegregation, his experience at Brooks led to his significant contributions to civil rights in Calver, which included serving as the first vice president of the Calver County National Association for the Advancement of Colored People. He also served on the League of Women Voters and Concerned Black Men of Calver County along with other honorable organizations. And whereas, in nineteen ninety-nine, Malcolm and his wife Annette Cynthia Jones Fun moved back to Calver County and became very active in the community. Malcolm served on the Calver County Plant and Commission and Liquor Board. In twenty seventeen, Governor Hogan appointed Malcolm to the Maryland Commission on African-American History and Culture. And whereas Malcolm's loss is felt throughout our community. Though he is no longer with us, his legacy to better Calver County will continue to live on for generations to come. His loss is a calling for all in the community to come together and continue his lifelong pursuit of a better world. Now, therefore be it proclaimed that the Calver County Board of Commissioners and all citizens of Calver County extend its deepest consolences to the Fun and Jones families for the loss of Malcolm Fun. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners will actively work to honor Malcolm's legacy and encourage the community to follow his example of being involved in civil service with the goal of keeping Calver County a wonderful place to live, work, and visit. Given on our hands and seal this ninth day of August, twenty twenty-two. So, the next item on the agenda today is consent. There's one item under consent, Department of Public Works North Beach Senior Center Property and Parking Area Memorandum of Understanding. Are there any objections to the item under consent? Hearing none, that item will be adopted as presented. Next item on the agenda is new business, Department of Parks and Recreation, position reorganization. Director Nazal, good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioner Shannon Nazal, Director of Parks and Recreation.
Morning, Commissioner. Nate Smith, Recreation Division Chief, how are you?
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
I'll go ahead and read the memo. So, this is in regards to a position reorganization in Parks and Recreation with a budget adjustment. The Department of Parks and Recreation is continually in the process of classifying job duties and tasks while adjusting positions to fit the most efficient and fiscally responsible needs of the community. In this case, the department is requesting to reorganize positions within the Recreation Division. This includes Office Assistant Two, Grade Sixteen, Recreation Facility Coordinator, Grade Sixteen, Recreation Automation Specialist, Grade Twenty-One, Building Supervisor, Grade Twelve, and Sports Services. These positions equal three point eight four FTEs. Discussion. After several positions were vacated in Parks and Recreation, staff evaluated and analyzed the positions and felt the positions would be better served by reorganizing the positions laid out in the Parks and Recreation Staffing Plan that includes the Recreation Aid Positions and the Therapeutic Recreation Coordinator Position. Additionally, a reclassification of the Recreation Automation Specialist to Recreation System Analyst One will help in recruitment and retention of a position that handles all technology for Parks and Recreation. Another reclassification turns benefited part-time positions into hourly positions, Building Coordinator. Other positions are duties that are currently filled through regular procurement practices, however, should be addressed as employees such as scorekeepers, facility coordinators. These positions total five point two five FTEs or an increase of one point four one FTEs. Fund One will increase by point eight one FTE and Fund Five will increase by point six FTE. Fiscal impact. Based on the attached budget adjustment, the fiscal impact is an annual increase in staffing costs. For FY twenty twenty-three, the increase is thirty-two thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Conclusion recommendation. Staff recommends that the B O C C approve the reorganization and increase the FTEs as well as budget adjustment on number ten. And then I do want to point out that of the thirty-two thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars, twenty-five thousand of that is funds already allocated within our Fund Five operating budget. As we are looking to reallocate what is paid on a voucher payment system to an employee based on the duties that scorekeepers and sports coordinators do, they should be an employee rather than be paid off of an invoice. So, with that, I'll answer any questions you may have.
So, just for clarification for me.
Yes, sir.
On the slide, on page fifteen, current history. These vacant positions, are they being abolished?
Uh, the vacant positions are going away and will be replaced with the items on the proposed side in that budget analysis.
So, we're eliminating five positions and creating two, four, six, eight, nine new positions?
At lower FTEs, the majority of them. That's correct.
So, our lower FTE means they are...
So, if you, if you're looking at the budget analyst, uh, analysis, if you look at Fund One, which is the top, the, the top of the, um, the sheet, it has the Recreation, Recreation Aid, Soccer Recreation Aid, Basketball Recreation Aid, Pickleball. So, those are point one five FTE. And then if you look at Fund Five, which is the next box down, the Facility Coordinators listed there as scorekeepers are all point one FTE. So, they will not work as many hours as someone that would be a full FTE position.
So, there are FTEs, but they're not forty-hour work week?
That's correct.
Or thirty-fives, I'm sorry.
That's correct. So, they were budgeted at the amount that they would actually work. So, these seasonal, they're seasonal positions and though they are, the forty hours per pay period, so that would be twenty hours a week for a four-month period.
Okay, I just needed to be, understand how we're...
Absolutely.
Eliminating five and adding nine for almost no money.
Yeah, well, so the biggest change is because we have those scorekeepers, the folks that come out to our games, they keep score, and the folks that are on-site while we're doing our pickleball league or doing our basketball league. They have been historically paid off of the voucher system, so an invoice and a check. So, those should be employees because we are giving them what they need to do, how they need to do it, when they need to do it. So, those should be classified as employees. And that is the biggest increase to the FTEs, where we're taking operating dollars out of contracted services or, which one is it?
But now you're gonna, you're gonna make them eligible for benefits?
Uh, for the, what would get, what an hourly employee would get, not a merit employee. So, they would be eligible for sick and safe leave and that sort of thing.
Okay.
And that ties in with the recruitment and retention...
Yes, sir.
That you spoke of.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else?
Can you please go over again what a recreational systems analyst one does?
So, do you, do you wanna go or...
Yeah, I can take that. So, currently, that job is a Recreation Automated Coordinator and they're in charge of all of our software registrations, sorry about that, registration software, our leak scheduling software for sports. That, so that is basically being brought in line with what TS has. They have system analysts, so it's a Recreation System Analyst that's specific to what we do over there, but they also work hand-in-hand with TS.
We have some very complex programming software that we utilize for programming, for scheduling, for inventory, for point of sale, all those types of things. And we, we have someone on staff that is the resident expert on that operation. So, they're the ones that train new incoming staff. They set up all of our equipment at the seasonal facilities. So, we don't usually, we don't have the point-of-sale system sitting at Breezy Point all year long. We only have it out there during the season. So, they go and get it set up. They make sure everybody understands how to utilize the software, how to utilize the, uh, the point-of-sale, how to run reports, and keep track of inventory, those types of things.
And these positions are vacant because...
Uh, that, that position is vacant because of a resignation.
And the other ones, they all just happen to be...
Well, they were, they were all resignations. Um, one, actually two, no, three of the positions. The Recreation Facility Coordinator, that, the person that had that position went on to a, a merit position in another area of our department. And the other Recreation Facility Coordinator and Building Supervisor position was, one person was in those positions and that individual also received a promotion into a merit position. Actually, the Office Assistant Two, so most of them, yes. Only the Recreation Automation Specialist was a resignation where they went to another agency.
Is a Recreation Automation Specialist the same as a Recreation Systems Analyst?
Yes. Well, it's...
It's a new title?
It's, it's a new title. Um, it's being able to, because we're going through a process of implementing a new software system as well for Parks and Recreation as well as the golf course. So, they are going to be in charge of those new programs and getting everything settled with those.
Okay, any other questions? Motion's? Move to approve, Mr. President.
Second.
I have a motion and a second that we approve the request by Parks and Rec to approve the reorganization as submitted and approve budget adjustment zero, one, zero as submitted. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
So, I believe... It's the last item on the agenda, Commissioner Reports is next.
Public comment.
Oh, public comment, sorry.
We do have one member online, unless there's somebody in the audience. So, Mr. Cormier, you are aware the Board of County Commissioners adopted a resolution in nineteen eighty-nine in order to maintain the order and decorum of the governmental process. We will enforce that. The Ethics Commission has also asked that we remind speakers of public comment that they... Commission has also asked that we remind speakers of public comment, that lobbyists must register in advance. And the floor's been open for public comment. Please tell us whether you're speaking on behalf of a group or if you're speaking as an individual.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Joseph Cormier, and I reside in Maryland. Today I'll be speaking on behalf of Calvert CCAC, the Special Education Citizens Advisory Committee. Friday, October 21, at the Harriet Elizabeth Brown Community Center at 901 Dair's Beach Road, Calvert CCAC will be hosting the Pathfinders for Autism and Calver County Sheriff's Office Driver Safety Program, What to Do When Pulled Over. This program is being offered at no cost to licensed drivers with developmental disabilities, drivers with learner permit with a disability, or passengers with a developmental disability that might be anxious about traffic stops. You can register at pathfindersforautism.org. CCAC and Calver Partners for Success will be hosting a resource fair at the same time, 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. inside the Harriet Elizabeth Brown Center. We invite the community to come out and join us. CCAC general membership meetings will resume Tuesday, September 13, at 6:30 p.m. in the multipurpose room of the Board of Education building. Our full schedule is available on the CCPS website, and you can join our email list by contacting us at ccat@calvernet.k12.md.us. We look forward to working with the new superintendent of schools, Dr. Townsend, and the new director of special education, Dr. Candy Anderson, as we enter the 2223 school year. Thank you to the Board of County Commissioners for your continued support of students and staff in celebrating all their achievements in arts, athletics, and academics. Finally, Calvert CCAC does not endorse any individual candidate or political party. However, we strongly believe every vote counts. Please check your individual voter registration to make a plan today to vote in November. Do you need a mail-in ballot? Will you utilize early voting or vote in person? Where is your polling place? How will you get there? What time do you plan on getting in line? Can you drive a neighbor or a friend there? Thank you so much for all your support, and have a wonderful afternoon.
Thank you. So now that brings us down to Commissioner Reports. Commissioner Hart?
Mr. President, on the time constraints of today, I'll just go ahead and pass until next meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Gayway?
Ditto.
Commissioner Williams?
Nothing to report, sir.
So the only thing I do wanna, that I should have at the beginning of the meeting tomorrow at 10 a.m. at the Harriet Elizabeth Brown is gonna be the first meeting of the Police Accountability Board. Public is invited to attend, so that's tomorrow. Wednesday, August 10th, at 10 a.m. at the Harriet Elizabeth Brown Community Center. Just want to comment today, you know, you all, if you were watching this meeting, saw us recognize Randy Smith. Randy is just an example of hundreds of volunteers that we have in Calver County and the dedication that they have to serve this community. So I want you to think of all of our volunteers when you think about Randy Smith and the service that he provides. So we've already done executive sessions, so I guess the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move. Sorry.
I have a motion and a second that we adjourn. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. You all have a great day.